How are we all?
Fine, thank you, yeah. Yourself?
Not too bad, not too bad.
Right, have we got anybody else waiting to come in?
No, no, we haven't.
Ooh.
Nice, okay, are we ready to start then, Sandra?
Yes.
Right, good evening, everyone. And welcome to the advisory meeting of the High and Ferris Town Council, July 2021. The clerk will be taken into account any comments made by the council whilst making decisions on the agenda items when using her delegated powers. Item one on the agenda are apologies.
Do I have a? Yes, yeah, councillor Tony Redding, councillor Peter Thomas and councillor Gary Salmon.
Thank you. Item two on the agenda is the declaration of interests to receive declarations of disposable, disclosable pecuniary interests and other interests, and the nature of those interests relating to items on the agenda. Has anybody got anything that they wish to declare? That's nobody. Item three on the agenda are reports and minutes for information to receive and note the following reports. Three point one, the minutes of the town council meeting held on the 29th of June 2021, which is on pages one to pages five in your agenda pack. Has anybody got any comments that they would like to say about the minutes? In that case, could I have a vote to show that we have received and noted the report? Would you all show hands, please? All right, thank you. Item three point two is the town clerk's report, which is on pages six to seven in your agenda pack. Has anybody got any comments that they wish to make on the town clerk's report? In that case, may we have a vote to say that we have received and noted the town clerk's report? Could I have a show of hands, please? Thank you. Item three point three is the accounts for payment, which is on pages eight to nine in your agenda pack. Has anybody got any questions on the accounts for payment? In that case, may we take a vote that we have received and noted the accounts for payment? Could I have a show of hands, please? Thank you. Item three point four is the budget report as of the 30th of June 2021, which is on pages 10 to pages 14 in your agenda pack. Has anybody got any comments to make on the budget report? In that case, may I have a show of hands, please, to say that we have received and noted the budget report? Vijay, are you? Thank you. Item three point five is the planning and development advisory committee, which was held on the 13th of July 2021, which is on pages 15 to page 17 in your agenda pack. Has anybody got any questions about the planning and development committee? In that case, may we take a vote, please, to say that we have received and noted the planning and development advisory committee report? Can I see a show of hands, please? All right, thank you. And three point six is the environment and recreation advisory committee, which was held on the 13th of July 2021, which is on page 18 to 20 in your agenda pack. Are there any questions about the minutes of the environment and recreation advisory committee, councillor O'Rourke?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I know I brought this up before the June meeting, I believe, but I'm still baffled anyway, because at the annual meeting on May the 17th, for members of various committees, on the environment, recreation, all the councillors that was on that committee, they all agreed to be on that committee, all came on the advisory committee. Now, I don't know what the difference between advisory committee and committee is, but does it change the terms, terminology, I don't know. But anyway, the fact is that councillor, I've brought it up before, but councillor Redding, he was sub for the new councillor and was elected chairman in May. Then at the July meeting, 13th of July, when the new councillor was Paul McCann, councillor Paul McCann, he was then, councillor Redding was then confirmed as chairman, yet he's a reserve on these, on this committee. I can't see how a reserve could be elected as a chairman.
And I'll explain, when we back to face-to-face meetings, they will then be, the committees will revert to full committees, we will then have to reelect chairman. While they're advisory committees, they're just the equivalent to working party. And that is a different, we had expected by July to be back to face-to-face at that one, but obviously we're still, they extended it until the 19th of July, and that's the only reason. It was just felt by the group at that time, because he had chaired the last meeting, and it was still in the same status that he may as well chair this meeting. But the next meeting in September, I'm assuming, will be face-to-face, and therefore a committee will its full authorities, powers it has. And so that all committees that have only met by Zoom to date will have to elect chairman again.
So he's only chairman on the basis of just carrying forward from the previous?
Yeah, yeah.
Committee, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, fine, that's all I wanted to know, yeah. I just couldn't figure out why they didn't elect somebody who was regularly on committee, that's all.
Well, I think whatever they did, even if they did, at the next face-to-face, they would have had to elect a chairman. When we go back to full committees with states, the full status.
Okay.
Thank you, councillor Jackson. You're on mute, councillor Jackson.
Still on mute.
That's fine.
Not only that, I'll switch myself out. The Riverside Park discharge pipe, have we had any reply from the owner of the property, 110 Wolf Road?
I can answer that question.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yeah, we've had, I've spoken to the owner and they are going to be writing in to explain some of the background and put requests through to the council for permission.
Well, it seems rather strange, because it's a blue pipe, which is not a normal drainage pipe, and it shouldn't really be going onto our land in the first place. So I couldn't understand why we were quite happy with them allowing it to discharge. It should actually discharge within their property into a soakaway.
I wouldn't say necessarily that the council are happy. I've asked the resident to write in to explain the circumstances behind why the pipe is there, and then that will be put through to council for consideration.
Oh, sorry, I thought you meant they would just explain, well, it will be left, okay, no problem. But in actual fact, it should have been in a soakaway anyway, but it should be within their property. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Spencer. You're on mute, councillor Spencer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was under the impression from original discussions we had on this that it was an outlet from a septic tank which was coming onto the ground, which obviously, as I've said before, would be a health and safety problem. We don't want any leakage of effluent. And as colleague councillor Jackson just said, it should not be coming out onto town council land in any case.
Thank you. I can't, Alicia, do you want to reply?
We don't believe there has been a leak of effluent. But what I would say is that the whole matter is coming to council once we receive the letter from the resident outlining the background to what has happened. So the whole thing will be put before council. Well, don't, yeah.
Councillor Jackson?
This is a Clargestha septic tank. And so when it fills up, the whole idea of this is surface water, shall we, or I won't say clean water, water, top surface water, the rest is down below, sort of being eaten away by little microbes. But you could hardly call it clean water, so it shouldn't, it should actually go into obviously a hardcore soakaway, and it shouldn't be just discharged, the pipe is on the surface.
I presume, Alicia, that once we've got the letter from the resident saying what he thinks is happening, we can actually respond to that, we'll get some advice on it.
Yeah, I would also say the Environment Agency are aware of the situation. They have investigated to a certain extent, and they have written to the resident as well.
Right, thank you. Any more comments? Sorry, councillor Jackson?
Do we know what the environment said or wrote to the resident?
Yes, we can circulate that.
Thank you, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Rourke.
Well, just a footnote on that environment chairman. I mean, on the planning one, I noticed that Vijay Paul was chairman, yet councillor Gardiner was chairman last year. So surely councillor Gardiner, in that respect, should have been carried forward until they actually have an election for a planning chairman at a face-to-face meeting.
No, that wasn't the reason councillor Redding was elected chairman, because he was chairman last year. Equally, at the next face-to-face meeting of planning, if the committee will then have to elect another chairman. These are just working parties. When they're done by Zoom, they are equivalent to a working party. So they will have to formally, to be a formal chairman, will have to be elected. It was nothing to do with councillor Redding being the previous chairman. I mean, he did express reluctance of taking it on.
I thought that's what you said, I thought you said he was carrying it forward, because until we actually have a face-to-face meeting, we'll have a new chairman.
No, I think it was from the May meeting to this one. And I think it's because there was some reluctance, he would chair the meeting.
Okay, so, right, thank you. Any more questions on Environment Advisory Committee? In that case, may I have a show of hands to say that we have received and noted the Environment Direct report? Thank you. Sorry, councillor McCall, thank you, thank you. Right, and three point seven is the Town and Farmers Market Working Party meeting held on the 28th of June, which is on pages 21, 22 in your agenda pack. So anybody got any questions they'd like to ask after reading this report? In that case, may I have a vote, please, to show that we have received and noted the Town and Farmers Market Working Party? Thank you, right, thank you. And finally, although it's not on your agenda, is the mayor's report. Just very brief, because the two events that I had in my diary to attend were unfortunately cancelled because of COVID restrictions. I am looking forward to opening the Duchy Barn Community Garden at Chichester College on Saturday, the 31st, so fingers crossed. However, I would like to take the opportunity to thank all of those councillors who have offered to attend the farmers' market this coming Saturday to man the town hall gazebo. This is something that pre-COVID, we did on a regular basis, and it's a good way to keep in touch with our residents. And finally, I'm hoping to have a tombola stall at the September Farmers Market to raise money for my charity. And I would be most grateful for any contributions of any prizes. Thank you. Item four on the agenda is, sorry, I've turned over too many pages. Right, the mobile catering van curry wagon request to use Saffron Road car park to consider the request from mobile catering to use the Saffron Road car park for one night a week, which is on page 23 in your agenda pack. Would anybody like to make any comment? Thank you, councillor Whiting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I can understand wanting to come, and I understand there's no problem that Chester, Raunds or Earthingborough. I think the biggest problem we've got here is he wants to set up at four o'clock. Now, we all know the doctor's car park would be completely unavailable at that time of the day. I think for a curry wagon, it's too near the residential areas and the doctor's surgery, because they don't close until about half past six. If the rest of the council are in agreement to the curry wagon having a chance to come, can I suggest that we go down the Saffron Road, well, the recreation ground car park? Because that way, it's not going to be anything, I mean, I can't see him going in the doctor's car park at four o'clock and wanting to squeeze into one parking space. So, you know, I'd like to suggest that we do allow him to come, but it's down in the pavilion car park, fairly near to the moat or the thing. So any smells that are involved, don't go over to the residence in Vinyl Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to say? Councillor Jackson?
I would imagine he's trying to use the Saffron Road car park, because it will be the majority of passing trade. I would imagine, I mean, obviously, you can put that to him, but I dare say the reply will be that the pavilion is just a little bit too far off the beaten track for the passing trade. Thank you.
And councillor Prosser?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm a parent at Little Steps, so I know exactly what it's going to be for, 30 to 5:30. And the other night I was there, and I think not only was every car park space taken, but there was a lot of extra space taken as well. So I just can't see where it would fit in there up until probably around six.
Right.
Four o'clock, or somewhere, thank you.
Right, thank you, councillor Prosser, councillor Spencer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I fully agree with councillor Whiting. I think the doctor's car park, or chemist's car park, whichever, is completely not suitable for that, because all the, all or any of the customers may all not be just pedestrians. And the traffic in and out there between that period of time is quite colossal, as councillor Prosser just said. I'm not particularly against him having a space, but I do think, as councillor Whiting said, the other car park would be far more suitable.
Thank you, I've got two people, I'm not sure who came first, so either councillor Gardiner or councillor Paul.
I don't mind.
Right, we'll go with you first then, councillor Gardiner.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I think we've all established that the doctor's car park is not the correct place to go for absolutely a myriad of reasons. And if this carries on, obviously, you've got school kick-out and everything else. So it's just a lot in one space. My hesitancy with the Saffron is that with doing the rounds with the PCSO and on her request, having to shut the car park on many occasions, because we're still having issues with antisocial behaviour. I did speak to her about this. The only concern that she has is a congregation of youths. I know that's not the aim of the curry wagon, I appreciate that's not the aim. It's to have, you know, her own business, his or her own business. But that is my only reluctance. We're working so hard against all the antisocial behaviour that I wouldn't want it as a meeting place. And also, I do have concerns of litter in the area. We have one bin there, and I know, as it says, you know, waste, but you don't know what they're taking off or taking away and how that could affect us. So they are my concerns, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Paul.
Sorry, I completely concur with the location, however, if I could go backwards a little bit. I don't know if a mobile curry van is the right type of business we want to encourage coming into Highbury. We have a farmers' market for this very reason, we have a curry stall at the market once a month. Now, for this guy to be coming in and setting up a mobile curry van once a week, it's in direct competition with the other two curry houses, within a stone's throw from any location that he can take. He's not paying business rates, he's not paying a rent, and he's not really contributing into the community. So I think we're potentially setting a dangerous precedent for other such retailers to want to come in and strong-arm us, well, you gave his pimp permission, so you've got to give up permission. So where does it end? Kababs, burgers, fish and chips? It's all going to take away from the livelihoods of the businesses we've got on the high street and the surrounding areas that have had a very, very difficult year and a half.
Thank you, councillor Paul. Would anybody like to make a proposal? Councillor Whiting?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Given what the councillors have said, I think this is going to be quite unpopular, and I completely agree with that. So therefore, I'd like to propose that we say to the gentleman, I'm sorry, but that car park is just not sustainable when he wants to use it, and therefore we cannot agree to him having a curry van in there once a week.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please? Councillor O'Rourke and all those in favour, would you please show hands? I'm sorry, have we got anybody against it? Have we got any abstention? I'm sorry, councillor McGowan, I didn't see your vote, I'm sorry.
I wouldn't worry too much, because it's my decision anyway, but I get the councillors' feelings on this one.
Okay, thank you. And item five on the agenda is the High and Ferris Festival prospectus to consider response to the prospectus for High and Ferris Festival commencing with a year of celebrations, summer 2022 to summer 2023, linked with the 600th anniversary of Beet House and Chichester College with a musical, Henry Chichester, in the summer of 2023. This is on page 24 to 29 in your agenda pack. So anybody got any comments that they wish to make about this? Councillor Gardiner?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Apart from me going, oh, the next mayor's going to be busy. I worry about the absolute sheer workload for our staff. I don't want to take away from these fantastic, enthusiastic, wonderful ideas. However, ideas always need someone behind them to deliver them. And that is my concern at the moment with staffing levels. I love the ideas, I think obviously they would need serious work on what we can effectively complete and deliver on the day, but we have so much going on, as I'm sure we will get on to on our next segment. We've got so much going on, we're already a staff member down. We need to cherry pick, I think, some of these ideas and not take them all in their entirety to deliver something fantastic, rather than something half-hearted. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Whiting?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, councillor Gardiner said what I was going to say. I don't think, I mean, we all know the work that's involved with Sparkle, which is a one-off. I think it's fantastic that the church want to do something to celebrate the 600th anniversary, and I think rightly so. But at this present moment in time, I don't think we've got the resources, and I don't think it's fair to ask the girls in the office to have to lead and administer all this that the church are intending to do. And quite honestly, you know, I think probably next year, as I said, we're already looking at Sparkle this year, hopefully we'll have it next year. But next year, we've got the Queen's Platinum Jubilee, and I think we owe it to the town to concentrate on giving the town a Platinum Jubilee. And I think the girls in the office are going to have an awful lot of work. I'm not saying that the councillors can't pull their weight and do a little bit towards it. But I think, you know, at this particular time, we could probably offer advice for the church regarding all the funding. But at the end of the day, they've got to buy there, it's very up-to-date, we're doing all the funding anyway. And I'm sure we could probably give them a little bit of help if they need it. I don't think we should take on administering it and leading on it, I just don't think it's fair.
Thank you. Councillor Prigmo?
Yes, thank you, Labour. I entirely agree. I think sooner or later, we've got to come to a decision that we are, as a council, will have to employ an extra member of staff, or we're simply going to have to start to say no to some of these things, because the council staff just cannot cope with this anymore. I think both what the other fellow councillors have said, I entirely agree with them completely. And it is interesting that the letter that we got from the church, there was in many respects, nobody, nothing to say. We will help you, we will volunteer, we will send staff to help you. It was all what the council could do, could do. And I think we get into a situation very clear, very closely, where we are going to have to employ more staff or say no to some things, and we're going to have to stand up and say no, because it's just too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like a proposal for that then, Sandra, or have you got the gist of the? Do you want us to take a vote on it?
I'd be interested to see, make sure that that is a majority view of the councillors present, yes.
And so councillor Prigmo?
And I'll therefore propose that at this present moment, we regrettably send a letter to say, no, we cannot participate in this.
Could I have a second, please? Councillor Brown, all those in favour, would you please show hands? Anybody against? Councillor Jackson, are you abstaining?
I'm not quite certain whether to abstain or against, so, because I was thinking of saying, we don't need a new member of staff, what we really need is a member of staff who is in charge of, say, the farmers' market and various other jobs, and this one could also be included.
I think that's a different point for a different.
Yes, so, but I'm thinking really, we're having a meeting, a private meeting afterwards, discuss various things. So therefore, I thought really, what I'm saying should wait until that meeting.
I think from a staff point of view, when we're doing events, if we do two big events a year, like Sparkle plus one other, that is still a big stretch. So if you want to do Jubilee and the other one, you're looking at three big events. And even if we were fully manned, we couldn't, I don't think we could do that and do everything else that we do.
Thank you. So are you still abstaining, councillor Jackson, or are you voting against?
I'll abstain.
Right, okay, so have you got your vote then, Sandra?
Yes, thank you.
Right, thank you. And item six on the agenda is the Queen's Platinum Jubilee, and six point one is to consider if the council should hold a form of celebration or mark the event, which is on pages 30 to 39 in your agenda pack. Has anybody got anything they wish to say about the Queen's Platinum Jubilee? Councillor Whiting?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, me again, yeah, I'll start the ball rolling. I definitely think we should do it, I think it's going to be a country-wide thing. And my God, it's summer treatment, isn't it? And I think we should, you know, go all out to do what we can, if it's on a similar vein to what we did a few years ago, when I was mayor before, and I dressed up in my 1920s roaring.
I remember that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if we could do something like that down the record, I see they're having a tea party on the Sunday. Well, you know, just something like that, it doesn't have to be a completely heavyweight function, but I just think we should, you know, prioritise and do something for it.
Thank you, councillor Gardiner?
I completely agree with councillor Whiting, however, there is only one thing, I'm not dressing up as a tree.
No, why not?
You can borrow my outfit.
Be a small tree.
Right, okay. So could I have, sorry, councillor Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All I will say is- Thank you, madam mayor. All I will say is that obviously we must put the flags up for this occasion. So we haven't gotten, because I know what will happen is if we just put them all in the market square and College Street, et cetera, then some of the other bracket holders elsewhere will be saying why. So therefore, can we start saving up? We need about another 15 or 20 flags. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Whiting.
Sorry, madam mayor, coming back. On this point, can I just mention that last week I had a text from Anna's daughter to say she'd found some things in her garage. Did I want to go and collect them? They may be handy for the council. Well, I should think there's enough fun to go around the market square three times. There's little flags that Jordan can wave, both Union Jack and St George's. And there's also red and white ribbons that you can just tie to trees and branches and things like that. And we have a big Union Jack flag there as well. So, you know, that's, thanks to Anna, you know, it will get reused.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson.
Actually, I've been wondering where that Union Jack had gone. You will find.
In my garage.
You'll find that Anna, very kindly, before we had the use of the barns, we used to have to store in the loft above the college where the toilet is now. And of course, we were lacking storage space. So Anna very kindly allowed the use of her garage. And it's one of those things out of sight, out of mind. So I think you'll find quite a bit of that was formerly tourism. We have now got a little bit of space. So we could, if the council haven't got space in the cemetery chapel, then obviously some of it could go to tourism. It'll always be used on the town anyway. So it's not a question of taking charge or whatever. It's just making it available.
Could I just have a show of hands then for people who think that we should celebrate the Queen's Platinum Jubilee? Could I have a show of hands? Thank you. Sandra, can I suggest that we make a working party for this?
Yeah, well, perhaps what we'll do is we'll come back to the next full council now. We'll have to put our heads together in the office with some ideas. And then from there, we'll form a working party. Because I think as well, you need to probably involve at least tourism on any working party.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And 6.2 is to consider participation in the Queen's Green Canopy Initiative. Plant a tree for the Jubilee. Now, this is where you can be planted like a tree, Angela. We'll see, we'll see if we can get you to grow.
Big pinwheel, though.
Right, councillor Jackson.
I'm definitely against, I nearly said against, for planting a tree, but it must be with a guard. Because as you've possibly noticed, we had five trees in Saffron Road and unfortunately, one is dying. And the other one was broken off halfway down. So whatever we do choose to plant, it must, we must take into account that it has to have a metal guard around it as well as. But I've got one or two ideas that we'll be talking about this later.
Does anybody else like to make a comment about planting a tree?
I'd just say I've been in touch because I know a couple of years ago, we were talking about this. Former councillor Gal came and talked to the Environment and Recreation Committee about the trees and the difficulty we have with locating them on our land because we have a lot of trees already. And there is quite a limited amount of space where we could plant them, where they won't impact on properties, which is one of our biggest concerns. And it was suggested there was three areas owned by the Duchy of Lancaster that we contact them. Well, I did and it came back saying, oh, yes, we're looking at this. But obviously with COVID, they haven't sort of kept that as priority. And the person's actually changed. So I've got in touch with a new person now and he's gone away to look at that. As to whether, and it'd be a community, the idea was it was a community planting initiative. But he was then asking me questions about who would be responsible for long-term maintenance. And so that's another issue in itself because already we have quite a big tree bill. But obviously as well, councillor Gal's also looking at Riverside Park where we've had to take out quite a few trees. So there may be opportunities down there for some replanting.
Thank you. Councillor Kelly.
Yeah, I agree with everything I said about the trees. There should be guards on them because you're right about the, I was a bit disappointed when I went down to look at them and they were, one was broken and a couple are dying. And also I was on about, and also they should be planted properly as well. Because they shouldn't just die if they were planted properly and with mulch round them and that sort of stuff. But also about the tree planting, looking at the bills for the future. Obviously, if you plant a tree, the bills for the future are in the future and quite a way in the future if you plant a decent tree somewhere. So, you know, keep worrying about the cost it's going to be, maintenance in 30 years' time or 40 years' time. That's different budgets, isn't it? So planting a substantial tree rather than a smaller tree would be quite good for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson.
The tree that was planted in the Castle Fields is an oak tree. And so I went and had a look at it. And obviously, I'm not quite certain, I fitted it all in, but one of the groups, it had a plaque saying who parked it. It was the Mayor's Mayor's Mark Parker, get it right, in 1902. And I thought this would be an ideal position that we could have somewhere in, say, the Nightingale Park. There is a position between the Nightingale Houses themselves and also the children's play area. Because it's an almost unused area. We've got lots of other trees that we've had planted at the top end. But one tree on its own in a yard, I wouldn't have thought would have created a problem, as the previous councillor said. It's in the future. The maintenance for that is going to be, with an oak, they take two or 300 years to perform maturity. So it won't be affecting anybody as long as we're sensible and don't plant it far too close to the properties in the first place. Anyway, that's my proposition.
Right, thank you. Anybody else have anything they wish to say? Right, could we have a vote then on whether we wish to participate by planting a tree? Would I show hands if you're in favour? Okay, thank you. And so that brings to a close the business of tonight's council meeting. If we'd all just.